Calling to order the regular meeting of the Everett City Council, Monday, January 22. Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Marchese.
Here.
Counselor Matusky.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Counselor Seminelli.
Here.
And President Napolitano.
Here.
Ten members present, do you have a quorum?
Stand and, uh, do you want to pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President. Counselor Capone.
If we could, could we please, we lost a couple of prominent Everett residents recently. One Frank Mastacola was a friend to all in the city, been involved with many, many clubs and organizations, father of Ed Mastacola, former Senator Frank Mastacola, local attorney Gloria Gavas. And we also lost a gentleman named Michael Odie, who is in his 90s, very nice man, and he happens to be the brother of Terry Iannaco, who is one of the council on aging. So if we could please have a moment of silence for the two of them, I appreciate it.
All rise. Take this present.
We have no members, we have nobody signing in for public participation tonight, but just for clarification, I want to clarify, I want to read the ground rules for public participation. So in future case, again, our residents understand what we can do, what we can't do. First of all, the purpose of public participation is to allow Everett residents, taxpayers, and business owners an opportunity to bring issues and concerns before the city council. Each participant will be allowed a limited amount of time to voice their concerns. Members of the city council are not allowed to ask questions or comment on these issues or concerns. For that reason, public participation is not a forum to address issues with specific members of the city council. Because they're not allowed to respond, identifying individual members by name in their ward is not allowed. If the participant wishes to be contacted regarding their particular issue, a council will be assigned to follow up with you via the phone number provided on the sign in sheet. Thank you for your attention.
Item number one is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president.
Oh, you have to open public participation.
No, they're right, there's no signings. No one signed in for it.
Motion to open?
Second.
Okay, a motion to open public participation, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to close. Second.
You have a motion to close public participation?
Second.
Is there anybody who has not signed in who would like to speak on public participation before we close it?
Have a motion to close. Second.
Have a motion to close public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item number one is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to petition for a psychic fortuneteller license from Jessica Coraciolo at 5 Waverly Street.
Counselor Lindis, uh, DeRosa?
Thank you.
DeFlorio.
Thank you, Ms. President. Uh, through you to the clerk, I'd like to ask the question, is this going on Waverly Street?
So, good question. So there, what I'm basing this off of is what I spoke to Ms. Coraciolo about, and also looking at other ordinances out of other cities. Salem specifically, I'm going to go with the city that has the most fortune tellers and psychic. Um, yes, if it was going on Waverly Street where she was going to have a business, one, it's in a home, it's a residential district that's against, um, the law. You're not allowed to operate in a residential district with the, according to the home occupant permit. So, no. So what she's going to do is utilize her home as an office space as a home occupant, and she's going to travel door to door, uh, as a psychic. So go to people's homes as, you know, they do those parties and things like that. So I did find, even though our ordinance doesn't specifically allow it, I did find other ordinances in other cities, and the states, the state law doesn't specifically disallow it either. So she applied, I figured it would go before the legislative affairs licensing committee, and we discussed it further there because it's new. And then whatever you decide, either way, I believe that it's something that we have to address in our ordinances, because I don't think it's prohibited one way or the other really, and I-
Maybe it's not prohibited, but at the same time, if she does anything at 5 Waverly Street, we have no way of knowing. So the best thing to do is send this to Business Community Development with further discussion.
If I could ask a question from the chair. Doesn't the license for a psychic or fortuneteller fall into the ordinance, the area of zoning for entertainment district?
That's if you're going to utilize a brick and, a location strictly for it. So there are different variations of a psychic license. I'm using, I'm going by what's, like I said, what Salem did. In the state law, if you have a brick and mortar location, is X rules, this is a little different, this is a traveling, um, business. And I don't think she falls under zoning in that case because she's not utilizing a location, bringing customers to it. She is going to them. And I think that allows her to do it. But it's something that we should discuss more, further in either licensing or CBD, whatever you'd like to send it to. But I believe she's allowed.
Well, I'd like to send it to Business and Community Development, and maybe we should put something, if this is granted, okay, if we have to grant it, if it's granted, then we'll have something stipulize, stipulating that if we do catch her doing this at home, there's a $500 fine.
Yeah, and we're allowed to do whatever we want. That's fine, and that's under my jurisdiction as clerk, and that'll be fine. I just want to bring it before you and discuss it in depth.
Yeah, I second the motion sent to Business Community Development.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion to send this to Business and Development. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
As have it.
Clerk will read item number two. Counselor Capone. Will we suspend the rules, take items two, three, and five collectively?
Second motion.
Motion to take items two, three, and five collectively. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk will read the items individually.
Yes.
These are renewals.
Counselor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Mr. Chairman, could I just be recognized as president, please? Thank you.
You're here, I recognize as being president.
Thank you.
We know you lost a lot of weight, but we can still-
We don't know who you are anymore.
All right. Items two, three, and five. Item number two is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president for two petitions for second-class motor dealer licenses renewals for Affordable Auto Mechanic, Inc., one at 83 Vine Street and the other at 1800 Riviera Beach Parkway. Item number three is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president, a petition for second-class motor dealer license renewal from Everett Used Car, Inc. at 70 Chelsea Street. And item number five is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to petition for renewal of second-class motor dealer license from Classic Cars of Boston at 7 Beecham Street.
Are papers in order?
They all are, Counselors.
Second.
A motion favorable action on the order, second. Clerk will read the roll.
Right, item number two. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. You have passed the order. Item number three.
Three.
Correct?
Three, two, three, and five.
Item number three, Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. You have passed the order. And item number five. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. You have passed the order. Am I reverting back to the regular order?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Item number four is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to, it's a petition for a motor vehicle dealer license renewal for Parkway Motor Sales, Inc. at 2034 Riviera Beach Parkway.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Is this a new license?
Uh, no, it is not. It's a renewal. I, I do, I think she might've just-
So it's a renewal, it's the same person, everything's in order?
Everything is exactly the same, yes. I don't, it just, on the agenda for some reason, didn't write renewal. I'm not sure why, but it, it's established. Oh, okay. So, yeah, I'm not sure then.
Yeah, dealer license renewal for Parkway Motor. So favorable action, you know.
Second.
A motion favorable action on the order, second. Clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Hanlon.
Just wanted to know what kind of a license it is. Just wanted to know what kind of a license it is. It's just a motor dealer's license, a first, second, third class?
It's a second class, sorry.
It's a second class?
Yes. So just so you we know, we only have three first-class motor dealers.
Thank you.
And one three, third class.
So can we amend it to say second class?
I only approved it as a second class. On the application, it was just omitted on the agenda. The actual order is for a second class. I don't think you need to. If that's okay.
The agenda, just as a summary.
Yes. It's just incorrectly, didn't write second class. Item number six is an order offered by-
Don't get a vote on item number four. You didn't call the vote.
I believe you did, yeah. You did not. I mean, you did miss it.
Been a long day. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Yes.
You have passed the order.
Yes.
Sorry about that. Item number six is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to transfer $400,000 from the Assessor's Overlay Surplus account into the following account, Assessor's Professional Services. The purpose for this transfer, it will be the payment of legal expenses, appraisals, and contractual services.
Favorable action. And this came out of committee favorable as well. Did you want to speak on it? Yeah, it's just favorable on this one. All right, Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we could, do we have anyone from, well, I'd like to just get a breakdown of where that $400,000 is going, the allocation between those three things. I know that the Ways and Means Committee had, had worked on the next three pieces for a long time. I watched almost three hours of tape for a committee I'm not on, because I wanted to make sure, and I know that they asked a lot of questions, I won't rehash those, but I would like to know the breakdown of each category.
Would you like to cite, cite somebody up?
If Mr. Demus is available in the audience and could speak on that, I appreciate it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Demus.
Good evening. Eric Demus, CFO.
Okay, Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Ms. President. Through you to our invited guest. If you could, I know that it's within the same department. Do you know that the allocation of that $400,000 between legal fees, appraisals, and, what was it, other contractual services?
Other contractual services. The best I can tell you is, right now, that's our estimate, our budget. I would actually break it down into two. I would say, I would put legal at approximately $300,000, and you can group the other two, both appraisals and contractual services, right now at about $100,000. I will make note, though, that that is basically just what our budget is, what we're estimating, because it is one line item, we do have the ability to adjust that as the needs arise throughout the remainder of the year. So we wouldn't be held to 300 for one and then 100 for the others.
Okay, so they're not committed at this point, it's just, it's a guess at that.
We have, we are, we are incurring fees, but at this point, yes, this is what we're estimating will get us through the remainder of the year.
Okay. And if you know off the top of your head, where are we at now with a balance on commitments on legal and commitments on appraisals?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
If you could get that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. President.
Counselor Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I, I think I just heard you say that this is new cases from what we had for the whole year? This is additional 100 cases?
This is what we think that it will take the assessing office to get through the remainder of the year. This will include, the bulk of this is for ongoing cases. However, it would cover any potential new cases. I mean, tax bills just went out, and we have ATB cases that people apply for every day.
Okay. How many, uh, this is a budgeted item, is it not?
Yes, that's what we're seeking.
How much is in the budget for this in the beginning of the year?
Uh, approximately $100,000, and that's how it is presented every year, as I explained at Ways and Means. Because this is funded from overlay surplus, and we don't know what cases are before us each year, what happens is we wait until, we wait until all of our funds have been certified by the Department of Revenue, and just like free cash, overlay surplus is certified by the Department of Revenue. And then at that time, once we're into the year, we know the cases that are coming before us, then on an annual basis, the assessing office will come in and make a supplemental appropriation. Comparatively speaking, I can tell you, last year, they had requested from overlay surplus approximately, I believe it was $200,000.
So this is going to be $700,000 for the year?
No, this would put it at roughly $500,000. I'll verify that, but I think the original amount that was in the operating budget was 100. And that 100 is always presented in every single operating budget. What happens is, once the state certifies the overlay surplus, reviews our ATB cases, then we come before council for the additional appropriation funded from overlay surplus. We can't actually fund from overlay surplus until it's certified by the Department of Revenue.
And the other thing too, so is the average payoff on this, I mean, I don't mean the payoff, I mean, imagine the, um, the amount of money that we give to the participants, is that, is it going to be about $4,000, average? 100 into 400 is, is $4,000. Is that what it is?
This, this isn't for actual payments that we would make to taxpayers. That comes out of what would be referred to as an overlay account. So if we issued a bill, and a taxpayer had petitioned, and we thought that we were wrong, or there was an error made in the bill, that would come out of overlay. This is specifically for the city to, number one, keep your appraisals up to date, and to defend us in ATB. There are a lot of cases, there are a couple of large cases before the city that require outside legal counsel. We have Patriot Properties that assists the city in keeping, keeping the city's valuations up to date citywide.
So this is an annual, an annual charge, we're going to get this every year?
It's an annual process. I can't tell you what the amount would be every year. Again, it's contingent upon-
Case by case.
The cases, the cases that we have.
But we're praising, praising our properties every year?
Yes, we're constantly keeping properties up to date, yes.
For the whole city?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor McKinnon. So just safe to say, because of the, we were in committee with this for a period of time, it went from 600 ABT to 100, that's the numbers that we got, correct?
Yes, so, right now, the city has approximately 100 cases before ATB.
And it used to be 600.
I've looked at, I've looked in the past, over the past decade, and the number has been as high as 500 to 600.
Okay.
So the city has done, the assessing office has done a tremendous job in cleaning up values throughout the city.
And this right now, I mean, legal fees alone on some complex cases that may arise in the future, that's what we're anticipating on this?
That's why the number is greater this year than it has been in the past, yes.
And that was the-
The majority of it would be legal fees, I would say 75%.
And that was testimony from the other night over in Ways and Means, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Counselor Marchese.
How are you today? Quick, just to bring me up, we spent, what, $300,000, $400,000, is that for disputes in the city of Everett on property?
100.
We spent 100?
I think we spent 100. They're asking for another 400.
Yes, so that'd be 500.
They're going for 500.
Just to be clear, this wouldn't be that we overcharged individuals and that we would be paying them back to the attorney's office.
No, not through this, I understand, this is for the attorneys.
This is for the attorneys and the outside consultants, yes.
We couldn't do this in-house for a fifth of that?
No.
No?
I do not believe so, no. Some of the cases that we have before us, before us are extremely complicated issues that we did not have the ability nor the staffing levels to do in-house.
Thank you.
Two cases in particular that are very complex.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But we, excuse me, but have we just said that everything else, are we doing anything in-house?
No, we're doing quite a bit in-house.
Yep.
And actually, the city is doing more in-house than what we've done in the past. During this past year, the city has hired a housing attorney who has been proving to be extremely valuable in assisting not only the assessing office, but also the ISD department as well.
Thank you very much.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Ms. President. Through you, through Eric. Eric, how much, after we transfer this $400,000, what would be left in the overlay account?
In the overlay surplus for the remainder of this year, it's going to be a little over $600,000.
So we have about a million dollars in there right now?
We do.
So we're not depleting the whole account?
We are not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Actually, Counsel, I have one more speaker. Counselor Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just recently, I was told that the Boston Edison plant, the Exelon plant, am I pronouncing that correctly, Exelon?
Exelon, yes.
This money is probably, some of that's going to be used, is that the Metz-Melvin Legal Service? Is that the name of the company?
Uh, the Mintz Levin platform, yes.
So some of this money is probably for that, am I correct?
Some of this money is certainly for that particular case, yes.
And how long do you expect that is going to go on for? This was just recently brought to my attention today, as a matter of fact, that this is-
Counselor, if I could, just, I want to remind you that if, information on this particular situation has been discussed in executive session. So again, in lieu of making sure that we're not violating any, any issues, we need to keep that in mind.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, for reminding me of that, but I'm not bringing up the, what took place in the, I just want to know if this legal team is proud of this, this money here.
Yes, they are.
And this has come into a head at some point?
I know, yeah, I know. I certainly can't get into specifics, certainly because I'm not sure what I can say and what I can't say, but I, I'm certainly hopeful that we can get a resolution as soon as possible.
Okay. Very good. Well, I know that that's an ongoing issue, Mr. President, I just, somebody brought it to my attention today, it's been, I think it's been in one of the newspapers, but, or even on the-
Counselor, if I may, what we should probably do is we'll make, we will discuss with the administration, an updated briefing, because Counsel Marchese was not here last year, we want to make sure that all our members are up to speed on it. But again, we also need to be cognizant that there are legal issues here that we don't want to be violating or potentially hurting our position.
I understand, but I wanted to know, before I voted on this, where this money is actually going. That's a big case, and I can see where it's increased to this amount of money.
I think a briefing in executive session would be well warranted and-
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Eric.
Counselor Hanlon. Okay.
Favorable action?
Thank you.
A motion favorable action, second. Clerk will lead the roll.
Item number six. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. You have passed the order. Item number seven is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president Counsel Hallen.
Yes.
Counsel McCasey.
Yes.
Counsel Matuski.
Yes.
Counsel McKenon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
11 yeas, 0 nays, you have passed the order. Item number seven. Is an order offered by Counsel Peter A. Napolitano as president to transfer $50,000 from budgetary fund balance free cash into the linkage fee study account. This transfer will cover the cost to perform a housing linkage fee study for our city.
Counsel McKenon.
I would ask for favorable action. That's a recommendation from the committee to the whole body now.
Just, I'm sorry, just one quick question. Housing linkage fee, is that on new, new building homes, right? Not obviously?
Would you, yes, would you like, if you have some further questions you'd like to ask Ms. Demos come up, back up?
I would like to ask just that one question, if it's for new buildings.
We have Ms. Demos up before us?
That's the only question I-
I can answer that question.
Okay, we have a motion for, have Ms. Demos come up, all in favor?
New development, right?
Yeah.
I figured this.
Tell her to explain it.
I just wanted to double sure.
Something we've tried to do in the past.
On this linkage fee, for to cover cost to perform housing linkage fee, that would be on new development, is that correct?
It would be on new development.
Would it be on development, two families and over? Is there all new development?
I'm aware that, I'm not the expert as far as the linkage. This is new. This was special legislation that was approved by the State House. I do know that there are limitations as to what levels that this applies to. My only guess is from being in some of these meetings and having hearing discussions, I believe it's over six units, but please don't vote me on that.
Okay, because I would hate to see a young couple come over here and try to build, not that we have that much land left, to build a single family with no income and have to pay a fee. So that's the only concern I have. Anything over that, I'm not-
What I can tell you is what this appropriation is, is now that the legislature has approved the home rule petition that allows the city to move forward, the very next step is to fund a study. That study will help come up with a draft ordinance that would then become before city council in draft form.
So could we have, yeah, Catherine, come up, please, maybe she can-
Motion, I have Catherine Rollins before us, please.
Aye.
Please put your name to the record.
Sure, Catherine Rollins-Danisi.
My question is, on this housing linkage fee, is that new development in how many families before the linkage fee gets into effect? Does it start from a single family, two families, is it all housing development?
So generally, let me take a step back. The study that we want to do will make recommendations about the types of property that the fee should apply to, so whether it's commercial, hotel, industrial, what have you. We do have the inclusionary zoning ordinance already passed by this body and signed by the mayor, so my best guess is that the consultants would not recommend applying it to any residential development, because that in effect is already subject to an affordable housing requirement. So the specifics that the consultant will recommend in terms of type of development, square footage, whether or not there should be a certain amount of square footage that's exempt. So for example, do you exempt the first 20,000 square feet of a development? Do you not do that? What do you do? That's all what we'll see in this study, because they're going to look at the entire market in our city and the entire metro Boston region to think about what makes sense, what won't prohibit development from happening, but will actually be helpful in helping us create more affordable housing.
Okay, so this study is basically going to be 50,000 and not a penny over?
That's my understanding.
So we're not going to come back three months from now and say we need another 20,000?
No, I mean, that's the best quotes that we've been given.
That's the quote that was given to you. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Ms. Rollins, how are you?
Good, thank you.
What is your title, just so-
Oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Chief of Staff and Director of Policy.
Catherine, so this would just come to, all this will be all new construction, not pre-existing construction, converting something over, someone converted 50 units to condos or something, would that apply to it?
So that's, that will be a policy decision that will be up to this body based on the recommendations. So what we've seen in other communities like Boston and Somerville that have this enacted, sometimes they do only new construction, but sometimes they also do major expansions on pre-existing development. So again, it's a policy issue. You can do it one way or the other, and we'd be looking to the consultant to actually look at the economic impact.
So we would determine the amount of units, will it be 10, or be 100, or whatever, would it apply to, right?
Yes, generally it's square footage.
Square footage.
That's the standard, yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Ms. Rollins. With the, with the linkage fee study, I know what the purpose is for and the funds coming in. From the administration's point of view, what are we looking to do with that money? Because I recall, I'm taxing my memory, but I recall when we were talking about affordable housing and we had set up the ordinance with regards to the number of units and how many had to be dedicated to affordable housing. I think in that language, there was a trust that was going to be set up, that was going to end up overseeing the city's building of new units. And I don't remember if it went, I remember making an amendment to get rid of that, because I don't think the city should get into that business. I think it was removed, so, and I have to double check on that. But with the funds that would be coming in through linkage, what is the administration's intent? I know that we have to set up an ordinance, we have to figure exactly what we're going to do, but is the administration looking to establish some sort of a branch of the city that's going to then go and build housing? Or are we looking, investing into existing housing, upgrading existing housing? Do you know?
I can offer some insight. So the enabling legislation that we got back from the state as a result of your home rule petition specifies that the city will create a linkage fee revolving fund for the creation of affordable housing, open to residents making up to 110% of the area median income. So we'll have to establish a new fund, and as to whether, where going out and building this housing, or if we're rehabilitating existing housing, I think that will go into the ordinance.
Okay. In what, what locations do we have in the city now that the city actively invests as far as housing?
You know, I don't have an answer for that. I'm not too familiar. I know what the-
Because I don't know how much is federal, state, local?
I think that mostly goes through the Everett Housing Authority, which is, you know, a separate entity, as you know. So I don't know much about whether the city has any specific funds beyond community development or-
Or obligations.
I don't know, unfortunately. I can look into that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Any other speakers? Excuse me, thanks, thank you. Your pleasure.
Second.
Counsel Capone.
Mr. President.
I apologize, Counsel Matuski, I did not see you.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the Ways and Means Committee, we did discuss this matter, and we all know that there's a need for additional housing, lower income housing. So anybody putting up a big unit building, apartment building, will be required to have set some of those units aside or put money into this linkage fee that will hopefully provide for people that actually live in Everett that want to stay here with a lower rent. We know that rents are skyrocketing, and this, this has to actually take place at some point, because people are getting priced out of their apartments in the city, and I do support this endeavor, and I hope that it stays with Everett residents only. There is a criteria that we could put in there, and Ms. Rollins is going to look into that. And that would be very important, that people that live here actually will stay here, that made a commitment, that have been here. A lot of people are being forced out of their units due to new homeownership, and rents are skyrocketing. So this is a first step to actually address that issue also. So I'm going to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Fable action.
Second.
We have most favorable action. The order, Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the piece, I understand the intent, and I wholeheartedly agree that we do not have enough affordable housing in the city. My only concern is, I know it's not a billion dollars we're spending, but it is $50,000 to put on a study. And my recollection is, on that, on the ordinance that we had established, it was an either-or. It was either a contribution to a fund, or it was established of a certain amount of affordable housing. And I think we amended it to get rid of the establishment of a fund, and we forced an increased amount of affordable housing. I need to look into that. Before I'm willing to expend $50,000 for the study, I would like to get some information from the administration in terms of currently, what exactly is the plan, if there is going to be an establishment of a separate entity under the auspices of the city, to actually go out and create housing and manage it. And I'd also like to know what, what units the city is responsible for maintaining and having, and how much we allocate for that on an annual basis. So I'm not opposed to it, because I think we do need more affordable housing. People are getting priced out of the city, unfortunately. And what I would request is that we lay this on the table, and we send a request for that information to the mayor's office for an answer by our next meeting.
Postpone.
Postpone till our next meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion.
Here's the motion.
Right, the motion to postpone, I believe, is the first motion, so we'll vote for the motion to postpone till the next meeting.
If it fails, we'll go for favorable action. Okay, this is a motion for-
Clerk will read the role.
I'm sorry.
Please.
This is a motion for postponement.
No, it is a voice vote. It will be a voice vote. Please.
So we have before us a motion to postpone this instead of the mayor.
He's the first, you're going to say, Mr. President.
Fable action, right?
Yeah, postponement is first.
Actually, the motion, if I could, the motion to postpone is a voice vote.
It is a voice vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, chairs in doubt, clerk will read the roll.
Okay. This is still for postponement. Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
No.
Counsel Diflorio.
No.
Counselor DePiero.
No.
Counsel Hallen.
Yes.
Counsel McCasey. This is to postpone, Counsel, till the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Counsel Matuski.
No.
Counsel McKenon.
No.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
No.
Counsel Seminelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
I believe it is, 5 yeas, 6 nays, you failed to postpone. Fable action is now on the table.
Clerk will lead the roll.
Counsel Hallen.
A motion. A motion to accept the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Now favorable action.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
No.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel Diflorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Hallen.
Yes.
Counsel McCasey.
No.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counsel McKenon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
That would be 9 yeas, 2 yeas, 2 nays you have passed.
You've passed the order. Clerk will read item number eight.
Item number eight. Is an order offered by Counsel Peter A. Napolitano as president to transfer the total amount of $621,500 from the CIP Stabilization Fund to the following account below, to fund the capital project request for the Sacramento Park renovation project, Sacramento Park renovation project, $621,500. The current balance in the capital stabilization fund is $2,071,865.
Actually, he had him up right from the, right from the read.
Make a motion to accept the committee report.
The motion to accept the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel McKenon?
Yes, this is page three on the Ways and Means Committee Report. That's on everyone's desks. Actually, what we did in the committee was, we, we took, we sort of redlined a couple of items here and put them out favorable. One was 5,000 for the sewer manhole adjustments, 65,000 for the granite and wall changes, 84,000 for playground rubber surfacing. Those were the three items that were put out favorable. The other two items that are still left on is the construction price and also the contingency for the building of the construction. So those two would probably be before the whole body, but the other ones that I mentioned prior, the three, those were asked to be favorable out of committee.
So 425 was taken out?
425 was taken out and 42.5.
Are you making this in the form of a motion?
In the form of the motion, I'm asking for favorable, favorable action on the 5,000 for the sewer manhole adjustments, 65,000 for granite-
You could easily just say, as the committee, as the committee reported, and that's how it is.
I like reading it, though.
Yeah, no, I'm just telling you.
Makes it sound more professional, you know, in a sort of kind of way, you know what I mean? So those three items right there, out of the committee.
Second motion.
On the motion.
I'd like favorable action. Okay, Counsel McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, after a long discussion with the administration, the mayor, and the team today, we are actually, if you want to have Mr. Demos come before us, but, or Mr. O'Donnell, the recommendation from the administration and myself today was to table the 425,000 for two weeks, because they're going to look at some other options to be able to do this building, maybe in-house or in other avenues. So they've asked for two weeks before we vote on the 425,000 for the building, to give them some more time to be able to go back to the drawing board and come up with a new game plan before we vote on that. At that point, you would take out the 10%, 42,500, 10% contingency, because you don't need to do to the building of the building currently. So the only things that would be before us tonight, hopefully, were the three items that Counsel McKenon just spoke about. That came out of committee with favorable recommendation.
Okay. So if I understand this correctly, you're looking to break this up?
Yes. We, we need, actually, it should have been on the agenda as broken up. It came out of the committee report as broken up. So the redlined items that we did in committee were the 5,000 for the sewer manhole adjustment, that's why I like to read things.
I'm sorry.
65,000 for the granite wall change, and 84,000 for the playground rubber. Those are the three favorable items to come out.
All right, so if we pass, my understanding, if we pass the items as the committee had recommended, based on what you said, the administration would have to come back as a separate item for the, for the-
It's still before us tonight.
Excuse me?
It's still before us tonight, Mr. President.
It's before us tonight, but if we pass it based on the committee's recommendation-
No, we refer to everything out of committee with favorable recommendation, the line item by line item.
What we did was, we had these three items coming out favorable, and the 425 and 42.5 is before you, ladies and gentlemen, tonight.
But the order reads 621,000.
The order is wrong.
The order is-
The order, the order is wrong. I'm telling you. We can amend right now to make this a two-
154,000.
Yes. It would be 154,000 total for the three favorable, and then there's two left on, the item which would be the 425 for the building, and the contingency of the building, which would be 42.5.
Is that a motion?
What I'm, what I'm, what I'm concerned with is that we're passing the three items. The only way to pass this order is to remove the other two items.
You can actually divide a question.
Actually, we're trying to, we're trying to divide right now.
That goes back to dividing the, the order.
What we did was, we redlined those three items as favorable out of committee. It should have been read as favorable out of committee to those three items and that total amount of the three items. And then there should be the 425 and 42.5 on the contingency. And, and-
154, and you leave 167.5 on the table.
Mr. President, just as another point of clarification?
If I could, so I do understand that you're looking, we're looking to divide this order, we're looking to pass part of it tonight, and postpone the remainder for two weeks, so the administration can come up and give us an explanation.
Yes.
Okay. Could I have that in the form of a motion, please?
So move, Mr. President.
His chief financial officer.
Second. Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to either any of the members on the committee, or if someone's in the audience can address it. The 65,000 for the granite and wall changes and the 84,000 for the playground rubber surfacing, I'm assuming these are upgrades? Or additions? Yes.
If, if I may.
Counsel McKenon, these right now are going to be upgrades that are actually requested from Mr. Souza, so the completion of the facility grounds will be complete. This other phase is the, it's the snack shack, as well as containment, storage facility, and bathrooms. That's the other amount, and the contingency behind it is the 42.5, in case there was anything that was additionally needed on top.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That's why we broke it up, and reason, reason why we're breaking it up, and we did so in committee, was they have an April, I believe, April 1st start for the Little League to be on the field, and they're trying to do that with this being done. So we, we gave them the three items, and then what we said was, we were going to bring the snack shack, the 425, and the contingency, the 42.5 here before this body, to be discussed or to lay it on the table for additional information. So that's what the, that's what the committee came up with.
Thank you. I actually, Counsel Diflorio, you still the floor?
I still have a question.
You guys, you actually, yeah, you're in the question.
So with the, with the individual items, the 5,000 manhole adjustments, the 65,000 for the granite wall charges, and the 84,000 for the playground rubber, what specifically are we doing that's incurred in that additional expense? I don't know if that's something the committee can answer, or if we need to have someone from the administration, or even maybe Mr. Souza.
We could have, we could have, I could have someone come out, just to explain it. They were at the same committee meeting I was.
Is it that? Souza's not here.
Could we have Mr. Souza, Mr. O'Donnell, and-
Let's lay it on the table until Mr. Souza comes up.
Second motion.
Yeah.
I mean, three hours.
We need it laid on the table for him to appear.
Lay it on the table.
Item, this isn't working. Item number nine. Is an order offered by Counsel Peter A. Napolitano as president, an interdepartmental transfer of 100,000 from the DPW Engineering Division Professional Services account into the DPW Engineering Division Salary Account.
This is page four of the committee report. Can we accept the committee report, please? On file?
Second.
Aye.
Thank you. Could we have Mr. Demos up before us, please?
Second motion.
All favor? Opposed?
All set, Mr. President? Okay. Thank you. Um, through you, Mr. President, to Mr. Demas. Mr. Demas, if you could, just go over this amount of money and what it's going, the purpose of it and what it's going to be utilized for, as we did in the committee, since we're having, uh, more questions from that. So I'd like to just have it explained to us.
Uh, certainly. Um, and I just wanted to start out that it's not the hundred thousand, it was amended at committee down to seventy thousand. Uh, during this year's budget process, we had a change in the engineering staff. Um, and one of the things that we tried to do was rather than hire an, another employee within the engineering department, we thought that we could actually outsource and hire an engineering firm to be an engineering on-call. So as such, we transferred the money that was historically budgeted in the salary line to the non-salary line. Anytime, um, we have a change, um, within a department, we actually have to go between salary and non-salary. So we attempted to move forward with that change this year. It didn't work out. Um, what we realized was that we actually, the city was more, uh, better served by having a professional engineer on staff. So as such, to get us through the remainder of the year, we're just putting it back to where we were for the FY seventeen budget and taking that money out of the professional services line, not hiring an engineering firm on-call and moving it to the salary line.
Thank you for that. I'd open it up to any other questions if any of the colleagues have them at this time.
Counselor, DeFlorio?
No, our order reads a hundred thousand. You actually don't need a hundred thousand, you need seventy thousand, is that correct?
It was amended at committee down to seventy thousand, correct?
Okay, so we're gonna, um, change our order from a hundred thousand to seventy thousand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hanlon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. The seventy thousand dollars that's going to go into the, uh, Engineering Division Salary Account. Is that the total amount that's going to be going in there?
The seventy thousand, yes.
The salary of this person?
Make the motion.
It's, yeah, for the remainder of the year. It's coming out of, so it's coming out of professional services and we're moving it into salaries.
So the full salary for the year is about a hundred and forty thousand, a little bit more than that?
Hundred twenty-five.
Uh, it's actually less than that. Um, I'd actually have to take a look. One, this individual is going to be doing more than just, uh, e- engineering. Um, it, he's going to be involved in DPW as well, so there's going to be a proration of his salary, but in total, uh, this individual's salary is approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
The, and also, I, somewhere in the report, I read that they weren't happy, uh, they, um, City Engineering Director of Public Works, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that too much for one person to do?
Uh, we, the administration does not believe so. Um, there's been a number of changes within, in DPW from an organizational standpoint. Um, this individual, the DPW director, isn't going to be directly involved, um, in operations. So the operations manager has been, that, that position has been expanded and the, the roles within DPW have, um, are, are being adjusted. We feel that, uh, this is the best way to move forward. If there's an operations issue, we have an individual, um, that residents or, um, counselors would be able to call. And from a more engineering standpoint, overall management of DPW is what this, this individual would be doing, more involved with contracts, more involved with CIP, the budgets, contracts, that sort of thing.
Could we get a, a list of the number of, uh, positions that are down there and what their functions are? Not any names, I'm not interested in names. Just, we have twelve positions and one's the assistant, one's the assistant of the assistant, one's the manager, one's the operator, whatever they are.
For, are you referring to all divisions underneath the DPW?
DPW, yes.
Yes.
And no names?
Sure.
Just the positions, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our invited guest. Uh, I, I did watch the, the meeting, as I mentioned earlier, and I understand that the, um, some of the councils raised questions about whether that individual be overtaxed, especially during winter months when you have snowstorms, et cetera. And it's the position of the administration to kind of see how it goes. So that's fine, it's within discretion to give it a shot. When, when did the engineer come on board with the city? Do you know?
I don't have a specific date, it's within the past, um. Yeah, um, with, less than two months.
Okay, so it's been two months? And, yeah, this is the fir, this is the first I'm hearing that we have a new engineer who's not the, we have, we don't, Mr. DePiero is no longer the DPW person. So one of the things that, that I had mentioned probably about three years ago, two, two years ago, we need better communication between the bodies and I think we've come a long way with that. But when you take on, and I understand that there's no new funds being expended yet. It's within the amount that was allotted for the budget, so there's no issues there. You're not looking for any kind of additional funds. But the reality is, we need to know who we're calling when we have an issue with a department. And when someone comes on with the city, we should know that, a, as the elected officials. So that's the only thing that I would say with that, so, uh, I appreciate it. I don't have any other questions.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our invited guests. Mr. Demas, we are increasing, uh, population by one, though, correct? We are bringing on one additional employee with this tran, with this transaction, correct? We talked about that in committee.
Yes, that, we reduced one headcount, um, in this year's budget when we tried to not fill that position. This will bring us back to where we were, which is increasing it by one position.
So we are bringing on one new employee to buy this transfer tonight?
Yes.
Okay. That's fine. I just want to make sure that my colleagues understand that there is an additional employee being hired under this transfer tonight of seventy thousand dollars into, into the salaries in line. Thank you.
That is correct.
Thank you, Stuart.
Thanks, if there's no further questions and favorable action on the order and amended, amended to, yeah, amended to read seventy thousand, strike out a hundred thousand.
Second motion. There's a motion to amend the order to, to change, strike out one hundred thousand, change it to seventy thousand. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is, your favorable action as modified. Okay, clerk will read the roll.
As amended. Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola? Uh, Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Marchese?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
President Napolitano?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays. Mr. President, pass the order.
Okay, I believe we're, clerk will read the next item of business.
Item number ten is a, a resolution offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as President, that a representative from the mayor's office and engineering appear at the next Public Safety Committee meeting to provide an update on the changes approved last year for Church Street and Webster Street. And that should be Counselor Napolitano as a counselor, not as president.
Uh, Counselor Napolitano?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to amend this to add, uh, Counselor DeFlorio and, uh, Counselor McKinnon to the piece.
So.
Second.
I, uh, have a motion to add Counselor DeFlorio and Counselor McKinnon to the piece. I do have a second and also.
Counselor Capone?
Counselor Fred Capone.
Anyone else?
Counselor Mike McLaughlin? Why don't we just do the whole body?
If no one has objection to the entire city council.
It's all a concern for all of us, so put the entire city council.
Then I'll amend my, my, my motion to add the entire city council.
The entire city council. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
This is a long-term project that's been going on for a long time. One of the first items I brought up when I first got on the county council, on the city council, uh, four years ago and in conjunction with, uh, with my, my colleagues here. You know, we've all had a hand in trying to push this situation on Church Street forward. Um, you know, every one of us now has spent some time helping out at the church there. We see firsthand the problems that are happening with the traffic. It, it's an unsafe situation. It's been studied, it's been approved, the money is supposed to be there. When is the project going to happen? So what I'd like to do, I'd like to send this to, uh, Public Safety, uh, so we can get those answers. So we can try to get, get an idea of when this project is going to be completed and finished so we can move on.
Would you like to invite any guests?
Like to invite the, um, Director of, uh, first of all, someone from the mayor's office, uh, engineering, uh, community development, I believe, had a hand in it.
Any councils that were involved?
And the councils that were involved.
So I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and I do have a second to send this to Public Safety, invite the mayor, uh, the direct, the director, the engineer in, and community development and all the, any councils that would like to also, uh, so invite all the councils that are on the piece, which is the entire body.
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, you'll refer this to Public Safety.
Madam Chairman, if, could we take item number twenty, please?
Second motion.
I have a motion, take, uh, item number twenty. All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, please read item number twenty.
Item number twenty. Madam Chairman, is a resolution offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano that the Legislative Affairs and Elections Committee review the job description and duties of the legislative aid position and make recommendations for changes if necessary.
Counselor Napolitano?
Thank you. Uh, as we're all aware, our legislative aide is on vacation due to family emergency. Uh, we're going to be doing a lot of services for the next five weeks. Uh, myself and the clerk will be meeting on how we're going to maintain the connectivity of the, of the department so we can continue, continue to conduct business as, as usual. But it's a good opportunity because we know that at one point, um, should be retiring and we will be filling this position full-time. So at this point, I think it's a good idea, it's prudent to have the Legislative Affairs Committee, uh, review the job description. I've, uh, have a copy from the, uh, from, uh, Mr. Corey and I've given it to the, uh, the clerk, so it'll be given to the, the committee members as well. But I'd like to review it because again, I don't believe the, uh, from what we've been looking at, it hasn't been modified since the bicameral days and it's changed a little bit. You know, let's look at this position now as how can it best support us as, as city councillors? That's the role. And Carolina's done a fantastic job for us over the years, but we need to look at the person who'll be replacing that, are they going to be able to maintain that same level and possibly expand the, the position if ne, if necessary? So I'd like the committee to take a look at it and give an evaluation and opinion.
Any other questions? So I have a motion to send this to, uh, Legislative Affairs. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Can we make a motion that we take, suspend the rules and take item number eight off of the calendar, please?
Second.
They want to take item back off the table.
So we have a motion, take up number, item number eight back off the table. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, if we could ask, uh, our invited guests to come back up, uh? Uh, Mr. Souza, yep?
Mr. Souza and, I believe, Mr. O'Donnell?
Sir Donald? Counselor Marchese, you're next.
Hi, Mr. Souza, how are you? I see you in here.
Good evening.
That the four twenty-five that you have allocated here for the, the, the bathrooms and the storage, do you have any bids on this or is that a bid that you have?
So, so that was a bid. We went through the procurement process twice, um, for this structure and, um, that is the price, one of the prices we received in the, um, in the bidding process.
And that's a first-class building like you show here without the mountain?
It's, it's a modular, yes, it's a, it's a modular unit, structure.
And that's, that's, like you said, you went out and bid and that's the price you got. Cause I, you know, I see it's a beautiful park and I'm, you know, wondering, I, if it doesn't get to work pretty soon, it's not going to be up. And I don't want to see another park sitting there for three years not being done. That's a showcase park as far as I'm concerned and I'd like to see those bathrooms being built and I want to see the storage being built. I want it complete. I mean, if we keep kicking this ball down the, down the road, this will allocate the money in June and there's, you know, we're going to have a first-class park and the kids are going to be using plastic porta-potties, I don't want to see that. Right, that's what I'm just asking. So that, that is an actual bid that you have?
Correct.
And that, when would this start if this money was allocated tonight?
So the, um, the contractor, um, would be able to complete the project sometime late April, mid-May or so.
So we'd have a complete beautiful park by May or June, right?
Well, um, yes, and, uh, but also technically the, the field, as you folks have seen, it has been laid out, the lights are up. So, um, if opening day is, if I recall it, maybe early April or so, the field is playable and so it would be able to be used while this structure is being built on the side,
Do you have any room for a statue of someone, myself, maybe in the outfield like they have it in the state? I'm just curious. And I could pose for it, you know, it's a big, be a big statue now. I could get some old pictures. But that, that's what concerns me now. If that, if that's the money that went out for bid and to complete that park by April and May and that showcases it and I mean, I, I have a hard time voting against, cause I know a, a, a building like that, it's not a bad price for that building.
Sure, and, and, I mean, could there be some economies of scale if we looked at it and did it in-house? Certainly, and, and we're, you know, we're willing to, to, to look at that if it is a concern of, of the council. Um, we certainly understand the price tag and, um, and for that point, we, we put out to bid twice, um, concerning the first go-around, we wanted to make sure that the, the dollar amount, it wasn't just something thrown up in the air. Um, so we're very concerned of that and, um, it is something that if the council wishes, if the council is concerned, we could, um, see what, what we could do in-house. It would require some work and a little bit more time. And certainly, um, you know, as it would require time, even if we were to get the appropriation this, this evening, it would still, we, we could never guarantee that the structure would be built by opening day, but certainly.
But it'll be built by the summer.
Correct, correct.
And by flag, uh, football season, whoever they play down there after that, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our invited guest, Mr. Souza. Uh, the, the council kind of split this question.
Yes.
And they held the building over for a little bit more time because they know we wanted to look about in-house. The reason why we asked you to, to come forward, thank you, uh, for being here and also Chief of Staff, uh, the upgrades to the contract, the, the five thousand for the sewer manhole adjustments, the sixty-five thousand for the granite wall changes, and the eighty-four thousand for the playground rubber surfacing.
If not.
That's, that's, we just wanted to get a little more, uh, detail on what those items were and why, why the need for the upgrade on those.
Sure, I, thank you. So I, I'll start from the bottom. Um, the sewer manhole adjustments, there is a MWRA line that cuts across, actually[1603.59] there is a MWRA line that cuts across, actually comes from the Best Buy parcel and comes up against the park lane. During the process of, when the contractor was there on site and working with the MWRA, as I understand, there are folks here that understand construction better than I do, MWRA reviewed the connections, if you will, and required that some additional work be done to the sewer manhole. So that's why we're seeing that price tag of five thousand dollars. The granite and wall changes, the wall changes itself are a, there is a cap on the perimeter wall that we've looked at doing some of the work by hand. Long story short, there's a segmented block, a special customer segmented block that we feel would be appropriate and necessary to have in place as opposed to when we originally designed it, was actually doing some old-fashioned work. You have the segmented block, but at the top level, it would require some handwork with the concrete, if you will. And in essence, they'll be more efficient, practical, durable, and aesthetically more pleasing to change the top piece of the segmented block. Matter of fact, if you drive by there today, you'll see sort of the missing caps, if you will. And this change would be for that purpose. But likewise also for granite, for some vertical granite, but also other granite for dedications and things of that nature. More specifically, even most recently, the, there was a request for dedication of the playground at Sacramon Park. Case in point, that that structure, that monument would require, I think it's about ten or fifteen thousand off the top. So that's, putting all that together, that's how I derived that sixty-five thousand dollars between the cap around the segmented block and also the additional onsite granite, if you will. And then the last item is the playground rubber surfacing. This is to cover the entire playground area. At first, and in a nutshell, when we put this out to bid, and you folks certainly recall this as well, when we put the CIP together and we've talked about this many times, it's our best educated guess of what we think of project with past and seller. The bids for this project came in higher than originally we had anticipated in the CIP. And one of the things that we kept sort of floating back and forth, we had a series of project alternates, which would that mean is if we had enough money, then we would entertain, there were the three or four alternates attached to it. In the ideal situation, the playground rubber surfacing wish would have been covered under the original price, if you will, of what I estimated, but it would not have been covered. And so therefore, this eighty-four thousand is for that rubber surfacing. It is now the best practice for playground surfacing these days. You do see the alternates, meaning woodchips have been very common, they're still used today in communities. But the rubber surfacing is more and more popular from a safety perspective, an aesthetic perspective, from ADA. Clearly, it's much easier to navigate on a rubber surface than a surface of woodchips or stone dust or things of that nature. So those three, playground rubber surfacing, granite wall change, and sewer manhole, in total eighty-four thousand, sixty-five thousand, and five thousand, those are three that we would respectfully request be approved tonight so we could move forward.
Mr. Souza.
One second.
If I may?
If I may, Councilor Capone still has the floor and I've got a list, so please, we'll follow the list.
I understand about the connections. I mean, the MWRA kind of came down, looked at it. Maybe we should have done that first, had them come down and take a look and incorporate that in. And the same thing with the playground, the rubber surfacing, I understand that for safety. Why didn't we incorporate that into the original plan when we sent that out for bid?
So in the original plan itself, we certainly, the standard is to have the rubber surfacing, but when the bids came in, we, certainly the bids came in higher again than what I originally estimated. And so in the course of events, and that's why I'm coming before you here tonight to request that we do add the rubber surfacing in, simply because what I estimated back, was it two years ago now? It was just not, did not match what the incoming bids were. So that is why we had to make some adjustments.
So the bids that came in prior for rubber surfacing, they were just too high or, I missed that?
Yes, the cost of the rubber surfacing was just too high.
How much more were the bids on that one, do you know?
Well, the difference between the mulch and rubber surfacing, just generally speaking, in my past experience, can range certainly, but just to give you a fair number in this scenario, let's say about fifty thousand or so.
Okay.
Woodchips versus rubber.
Right. And, okay, so nobody's perfect. You know, life goes on, things happen. But if we look at it, the bid before was fifty thousand to go rubber over woodchips. And now because we have to do it later on, is it, I want to make sure I understand that. No?
No, no. What I'm saying is, and I can get a detailed breakdown, but if I recall off the top, generally speaking, for a project of this nature, the cost difference between going with woodchips versus going with rubber surfacing, there's a gap of that amount, more or less.
Fifty thousand. Is it fifty thousand to do woodchips or is it fifty thousand to do the rubber?
No, it's the cost difference between the two. It's the cost difference between the two.
Okay, so there's a cost for woodchips.
Exactly.
And then you've got the difference of about fifty. So with this upgrade, I know the contractor is going to say, look, this isn't what I bid for. I bid for woodchips. So what was allocated for the woodchip portion of it and are we exceeding the fifty thousand with the eighty-four?
So there is an increase in the cost for the rubber surfacing. So we would be exceeding the amount that would be allotted for the woodchips. I'm sorry, I think that's.
Yeah, no, it's, and I don't want to beat that point to death because, I mean, obviously things happen. When you bid on a project, you have a certain idea of what you want to do, there's budgetary interests and concerns. And then if things shift, you make your changes. Unfortunately, when you make your changes, like anything, you do a house, whatever, you have add-ons. It starts to run. So it looks like we're maybe about thirty-four thousand or so higher than we would have been had we incorporated in the first thing. But things change over time. So it's just that, see the thirty-four there and then the five for the manhole covers? There's, you know, maybe forty thousand dollars we wouldn't have to have on the project that we just kind of took a sharper look at at the beginning. And then the only other question I have is with regards to the granite. You're saying that the individual granite piece is probably about ten, fifteen thousand?
Correct.
How much granite is that? I have no idea what granite runs.
So I can give you an idea, for example, over at the, at Glendale Park, the entrance granite on the side nearest to the school, it's basically the dedication plaque. It is on a, you have the bronze plaque on a platform of granite, that footing. We've priced that out and the range is anywhere from twelve to fifteen thousand, depending on what exactly is supporting it and so. And likewise, there's some vertical granite as well required on the site and on the sidewalk. And also, obviously, the wall changes that I talked about as well.
Okay, okay. And so the individual pieces of granite, we're looking at slab maybe for a plaque and then, did you say some on the wall for the granite?
So there is, the bronze plaque gets affixed onto.
Onto a slab or some sort of a base?
Correct.
Gentlemen, could you please keep the side conversations? Please keep the side conversations down. It's getting a little distracting. Please proceed.
So we have that foundation piece with the plaque. Where else would we be putting it?
There is also a dedication plaque also for mystery outpost as well. And there is also to be a dedication plaque recognizing Everett City Government, this council, and the executive office as well, which is standing with all of our park projects, essentially highlighting the funding source, those that were, that approved the project and acknowledgement of the work of the restoration that was done. No different than the plaque again that we've seen at Glendale Park. Do not have one at Day Park, I'm to think, but even for example, at the parlin, there's a dedicated plaque and so on. And that, over at our libraries and so on. So that is, that is another cost, if you will.
Okay. All right, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Councilman Hamlin.
Chairman. Thank you. My question is similar to what Councilor Capone was talking about. When we first came in here for the purpose of, you know, discussing doing a Sacramon Park over, I recall that we talked about the bathroom here and we talked about putting a new bathroom in there. But I don't recall doing the concession ground equipment, and that's okay. But what I want to know is that we had an amount of money in the contract to build that building. And I want to know, is the, this four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, is it included in that? Or do we have extra money for the original bid for the bathrooms besides this four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
So the conversation with respect to the bathrooms, I don't recall that conversation. Certainly, this project started with my predecessor. But what I can certainly attest to is that the bathrooms, the concession, the snack shack, if you will, and the storage sections were added after the original conversation and through a process, through a conversation with Little League and others and other organized sports and folks at DPW. So it's become more than just simply what was there before. And why has it become more? Well, we have to make the bathrooms ADA accessible these days. We've had to add relatively minor, but we've had to add security camera to it and some additional features to that, to the building because there's goods in there. There's a section for the maintenance equipment. So you might recall, I vividly remember this, the temporary fencing where at Sacramon Park it stacked away on the corner neatly stacked and so on. But putting that inside the structure to protect it, because it's our, it's our ten, twelve thousand dollars, if you will, for temporary fencing. And likewise too, the, we all certainly probably recall, even at times when the bathrooms weren't working, you had the temporary porta-potties out there. With this major investment in the park as a whole, it's decided to make sure that all corners of the park complement each other. So that's how it did morph into more than just simply the taking the existing bathrooms and doing a quick rehab. We added more to it, but with, I'd like to think with some thought. Again, with the storage areas, there's two particular storage areas that would take away from the need of having those temporary storage containers out in the field. And that's the last thing one would want. And a turf field is to have somewhere tucked in the back, storage containers that can easily get vandalized, broken into, you know, equipment being stolen and so on. You don't want to have that situation happen. So as I, again, as I recall, since my time here, it's grown into more than that for all these reasons.
I have no problem. You could have put up twice the aside. All I'm asking is what happened to the amount of money we had for the original plan to do the original bathroom? I have no idea what it was. Let's just say it was ten thousand dollars. Is that in this four hundred and twenty-five or is that somewhere else? And are we going to use that also for this bathroom? That's all my question.
So the, and Councilor, please correct me if I'm wrong, but as I recall, there was an earmark that was received through the state senator's office, fifty thousand dollars for the concession stand. Fifty thousand, yes, yes. And that money is, that money was received, that earmark was probably two or three years ago. That money is within the total budget of this project.
So it just got dispersed into other areas? And that's okay if that's just what happened to it?
It will be attributed to this project. And the purpose of that money, the earmark, was specific for the concession stand. So we certainly keep to that. The, I certainly wish that the cost would be that amount, fifty thousand. But unfortunately, it's more than that.
I just want to make sure it was four twenty-five and not, that would be four seventy-five. It's not going to be four seventy-five, it's four twenty-five. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, I have to agree with Councilor Marquezey. I know it's a great idea to do things in-house and we have guys that are very, very talented. I don't think we have the manpower to actually build something like this. I think it's going to take forever. So what's going to happen is the field is going to be open, the kids are going to be playing either baseball, football, or whatever, and our construction guys are still going to be there. I mean, this is a, not just the hut, I mean, you have to have a foundation. There's plumbing involved for the two bathrooms. So I'm not saying that our guys are not capable of doing, I'm saying they have other work to do that they just can't be working twenty-four hours a day on this hut. So I would have to agree with Councilor Marquezey and just pass the whole hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and get this done for the kids. We don't want kids on the field and our guys constructing things, I mean, the kids can get hurt. You'll have blocks everywhere, tools everywhere. I think it's a liability. That's, you know, I mean, not that our guys can't do it, I just says I don't think we have enough manpower for them to do it in a certain amount of time. I think it would take a lot longer and it would be more of a liability problem with kids playing on the field. So.
I hear what you're saying, Councilor. I understand. And that's why we kind of asked for the two weeks because we think we may be able to come up with a more comprehensive plan where it wouldn't be strictly in-house, but it still could be a potential cost-saving measures for us. And it really wouldn't have pushed things out any differently than if we were to pass the money, the order tonight and tell the thing.
That was going to be my next question.
So we're very conscious of the timeline as well as everything, but we just feel that it was a productive meeting. And we think there's other options that, given the time to explore, could either put us into the situation where, you know what, it probably is better to just get the money and do it or, you know, we really think we have a good plan here that doesn't push anything back or push any scheduling things back or anything and still have the same type of quality hut. The plumbing is already there, so that's just a matter of hooking up or anything like that. It's not, a lot of the stuff's already there in place for us to move forward with.
Oh, all right. So with that being said, so basically, we're going to pass a hundred and fifty-four thousand tonight and then lay four hundred and sixty-seven, five hundred on the table for two weeks. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, that's the meeting that Mr. O'Donnell was just referring to. We had today, the mayor, we found out that the rough was already done for the plumbing and the electrical. There is no foundation. It goes on a slab. They come in and pre-construct it in place. So most of the rough work is already done and already in place as of today. That's why we thought the cost could be decreased if we were to look at other avenues to be able to do so. With the mixture of maybe some donations from some of the local contractors and some other options, but the administration need a few weeks to be able to come up with maybe a new game plan of how to do this. We obviously all want to see this built and built as first-class because it's a beautiful park. We've all supported from day one. But I think there may be a better way. You could buy one family house in Everett today for four hundred thousand dollars. I, Councilor, you can. I'll give you some listings tonight. It's a lot of money and I think if we look at it for a couple more weeks, we might be able to save some money here and do this at the same rate of high-quality work. That's why I asked for it to be laid over originally for two weeks.
Councilman DePerro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Souza, is this concession stand solely going to be operated by Everett Little League or other organizations going to have access to it as well?
So the concession stand is for public purpose. How it gets assigned, I would defer to the folks at Parks or at DPW. But that's a fair question, but it's going to be for general public use.
I was ready to vote for this tonight, but the administration is assuring us that this really won't delay it too much and that's fine with me. As we all know, sports in this city are difficult for a lot of families to afford. I think we've all been involved in a youth organization at one point or another and they really rely on these concession funds to help offset that cost. So as long as it's not going to delay it too much, we might be able to come up with a better solution here. That's fine with me. Thank you.
Councilman McKenon.
Just a quick question. What we got out of the committee was you needed those three things to get it up and running for the baseball, correct? Okay.
If I may, I apologize. The rubber surfacing, that is for the playground area?
Yeah.
So we wouldn't need that to play ball?
But it was included at that time?
Correct, yes.
So those were the three items that were included in the report as well as, okay. And this meeting, there's a call of a meeting. I wasn't notified. So I don't know who had the meeting or what was happening with it. So was anybody at this meeting that, who was at the meeting?
Well, I guess it just started off as a discussion this afternoon after we were stepping out of a meeting, but it was Councilor McLaughlin, the mayor, myself, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Souza.
It would have been probably nice to have most of the committee members there then, if we were there for like two hours the other night.
That would break open meeting law, Councilor. You can't do that.
Or just at least let us know what's going on at these meetings. Courtesy, courtesy call. Would have been nice. Thank you.
Councilor Marquezey.
Like you said, I'd be in favor even for voting for the full amount tonight, but, you know, we're also the taxpayers. If you guys could go out and get a estimate, do it in-house, save half the money, and we save twenty-five percent of the money. Just want to make sure you don't cut the time too short. I mean, in two weeks, if you come back with an estimate or something like that, you know?
Yes.
That's our primary goal, Council, not to cut the time too short and not to cut corners, to keep that.
It's a beautiful park.
State-of-the-art park that it currently is.
And the rubber you put on it, is that just sealed on there?
So there's a base, long story short, it's a rich base of rubber surfacing that's colored and.
What's the life on that?
Sure, it's ten to fifteen.
Ten, fifteen years?
There is a maintenance cost, no different than any other thing. Every three to four years, you have to clean and put a new sealant on it and so on. So it is the best practice.
So we've got a pretty low maintenance field going up there.
That's true.
Really?
Yes, that's true. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm fine.
I just have actually one question for the chair. I don't expect you to have the answer tonight, but it's, you know, we're coming back in two weeks. What are the estimated annual maintenance costs for this facility, this building? Going to be running plumbing, obviously it's not going to be operational during the winter months. It's going to need to be shut down, winterized. What are we looking at for annual operating costs for this concession stand?
So I'll be happy to furnish an answer by the next meeting. And we can certainly base that on examples from other communities that have similar structures to this, but also even from our existing structures. There are water meters there and now see, we can get some data together. So I'll have that for you at the next meeting.
I think it's, these projects are great, but we also have to look at the cost of maintaining these projects after they're constructed. And I think that always needs to be factored in. All right.
The customary thanks?
Motion to, excuse me, customary thanks. One second, I actually have one more speaker. I do apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilman Seminelli.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Through, former Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you for Councilman Seminelli. We wanted to, he wanted to know NESARA, the name, what is that, who is that?
Yes.
And where are they located?
Sure. So NESRA Engineering is the engineering firm that we have on for this project that has done the design and the construction administration. They're located in Totten. And the gentleman is arson. in Totten. And the gentleman is Arson Hamgizi, and he was, he was here at the committee meeting, as you may recall, seated to the right of me. And he has many years' experience in, in these projects. Most recent projects he's completed here in Everett, I believe, started with Glendale Park, with Day Park, Meadows Park, and now Sacramone Park and Swan Street Park as well. And also, he's, his specialty is, is playground, but also turf. And he's done some work in some local colleges as well. So, NESRA Engineering is essentially, it's, it's, it's his own, it's his own business, his own startup, if you will.
And they were the lowest bidder?
So, the NESRA Engineering is the engineering firm that we have on board. The contractor is Heimlich. Heimlich was the, for construction, Heimlich was the lowest bidder. In terms of the, the engineering, we do, from time to time, go out, and engineering and architectural services are exempt from procurement. But we do, out of my office, at least once a year, go out and put out a request for proposals to get pricing from different engineering consultants to make sure that they, that they're, they're fair, and that the pricing is fair, I should say. And so, and we feel that his pricing has been fair.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Any other questions? A motion to excuse customary thanks, all in favor?
Aye. So, Mr. Chairman.
At this point, we, talking with the clerk, we do not have a formal motion on the floor, so I'll entertain motions at this time.
I was going to just give you the motion to lay 400, cut out 621,500, and we're going to lay 425,000, no, I'm sorry, 467,500 on the table, and we're going to pass 154,000.
No.
Postpone it to this next meeting.
Can I just say that-
One moment.
Can I give you the, that was correct, but the proper motion is that we're, we're asking for a division of the question and to put 154,000 for favorable action.
Yeah.
And the six-
Six, 467,500.
467,500. But if you don't say the division part, you're-
Just say 154.
You have to divide it. So, you can take it as my motion. Just, just so, you know, sorry.
To divide it.
I just wanted to correct, so it passes.
We're going to divide 621,500. We're going to divide it into 467,500.
Subtract it.
And postpone the 400, no, we're going to divide it, we're going to subtract 467,500. And that's going to be postponed for two weeks, and then we're going to, 154,000 with favorable action.
Correct.
So, the division is 467,500, and 154 adds up to 621,500.
Correct. We're dividing the order into two parts.
And there will be two separate votes. The 467,000 to postpone would be first.
Okay, what's the first motion here?
The first motion is to lay 467,500, postpone it for two weeks.
Do I have a second? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor right now to divide the order and postpone-
467,500.
467,500. Mr. President?
For two, for our next meeting.
For our next meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
In favorable action on 154,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve.
Second, 154, yep.
On the, on the question, Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad that we're going to take another look at the structure. There are some issues that need to be addressed, as has been mentioned in this body. I know the committee had noted that there were two storage units. We don't know who's going to rent those. We don't know how individual organizations are going to staff or man the structure, who's going to be responsible for that. So, there, there are a lot of issues that need to be addressed. And as they go to look at the construction costs, those are things they have to look at. The other thing that I, I want this counsel to be aware of is although we're all in favor of this project, and we want to maintain and do parks, the original budget on this park was 2.5 million. Now, we're talking about $600,000 more. We had to purchase the land at Best Buy, which I voted against, which was approximately $300,000. So, this park is looking at $3.4 million. And four years later, we still don't have a park at Florence Street. So, I just want to keep all of that in mind. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve-
154,000 favorable action.
And a second. Clerk will lead the roll.
On the 154,000, Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePerro.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Marchese.
Yes.
Counsel Matuski.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
That would be 10 nays, 0 nays, Mr. President, if you pass the order.
Clerk, resume the count. The order of the contender.
Item, item number 11, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Wayne Matuski that a representative or terminal manager of ExxonMobil-
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Counsel Hanlon.
Did we actually vote on the two questions?
Yes.
We did.
The first question was voice vote, because it was just a referral.
Thank you.
Right, and the second one was, was a multiple call.
And that was, is that okay? Okay. That a representative or terminal manager of ExxonMobil at 52 Beecham Street appear to explain why loud horn alarm went off for over three months disturbing the neighbors.
Counsel Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there anybody here from ExxonMobil? Oh, we want them here at some point, but I just want to fill the membership in, and if any of my neighbors are watching this cable program this evening. The issue of this horn going off, alarm horn, for seven or eight hours per day, starting, it could be 3:00 in the morning, various hours, but it went off for four months, as I mentioned at the last meeting or two meetings ago. But at any rate, I did make a call to our fire chief, because I was concerned about our firemen. If these alarms are not working correctly, and that is flammable material, Mr. President, I'm a little concerned for the safety of my neighborhood and the fire department and other public safety people that might be involved. At any rate, I did place a call to the fire chief, Colley, and he put me in touch with Deputy Chief Sean Dattoli, who is an outstanding fireman in the city, and he actually called me three times on this issue. He went down to the facility and spoke to, and took a tour of the plant, the property. There's 20, more than 20 tanks there, Mr. President. I never was quite sure exactly how many tanks are down there on that side of Beecham Street. The other side of Beecham is ExxonMobil too. But for the, for the, in terms of this resolution, I were concerned about the ones next to the residential area. So, he went down, and he spoke to the plant manager, the facility manager, and the tanks are, most of the tanks are empty, according to him. And when they become empty, the alarm goes off at a certain point. They're in the process now of rewiring all their tanks and, and putting a new alarm system in. But it would have been nice for them to actually communicate with the neighborhood. And the reason why the alarm went off at these various hours was because nobody works at those, in that plant. There was no security. Evidently, it's a ghost town when they roll up the sidewalk there, when the men leave, men and women leave. And that's really not cool, because after my own personal investigation, as I said at the last meeting, I thought I was in Chelsea, to be honest with you, because I couldn't tell where this noise was coming from. And my neighbors are quite perturbed about it. But needless to say, I haven't heard the horn go off since bringing this to the attention of the person that was actually there. I think it's understaffed over there. I haven't been on this property. I only live maybe a block away from where the first tank is, okay? It's right after the railroad tracks. It's, it's more or less no man's land. And Chief, Deputy Chief Dattoli said that I could take a tour. I'm going to set that up with any members of the council that are interested. Counselman McKinnon and Counselman Simonelli indicated they'd like to, you know, we have to keep an eye on these various big plants that we have, Exelon included. There's a lot of stuff going on in these properties. And I'm sure we've all heard the, the thought that there, there's going to be a nine-hole golf course there at some point, you know, to correspond with the casinos, the casino. So, I, I want to know what's going on in my backyard. ExxonMobil hasn't been a good, you know, they donated $1,500 to the children's summer program. Hello! They're one of the biggest corporations in the world, and they're throwing manhole covers around here. And they're not a good business, okay, as far as a neighbor, a budding neighbor, Mr., you know, it's unfortunate that we put up with some of this, this kind of issues where I happen to live with mixed-use kind of industry and commercial. But the problem has been solved to this point. But I am going to put, when the weather breaks, those are interested, I will call every councilman, through you, Mr. President, anybody that wants to take a tour, and if they do plan on putting a golf course down there, I'd like to know about it. But you've all heard that, and that's just didn't fall out of the sky yet. So, I, I want to know what their intentions are. If the tanks are empty, if they're empty, I don't, and they're paying less taxes, I understand. If the tanks are empty, they're not paying full value for what they're supposed to be.
Would you like to have them come up to a committee so you can get the answers to your questions? I'd really rather you not speculate without us being able to confirm. But I understand, I understand your concerns. I do. And I think it's a great idea to have a tour. I used to arrange something similar down at District Gas for our new members so they understood. Actually, I believe, you know, surgery, when we first got on, we brought them down there. So, again, so we're, we're better informed. So, I think it's a great idea, you know, what you're planning to do.
At this point, Mr. President, we have invited somebody from this company here at least once before. So, I've got the information I need. The problem has been solved. I will work with the deputy chief and communicate with you, and through the mail, by the way, gentlemen. You know, a lot of people think, oh, I emailed you. No, no, no. You called me on the phone, and then, you know, we've got to get back to some old-time religion here. People think, oh, I emailed you. No, 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 no. I've been around the block a long time. They've done tours now at the casino without me knowing about it. I haven't been on one of them yet. This Exelon thing is becoming a big issue in my neighborhood. I want to know if they're using those smokestacks. So, there's a lot going on here with these big companies that are throwing manhole covers around. It's like, refer to their generosity. But at any rate, and I'm going to refer this back to sponsor, is it possible through the, you, Mr. President, to the clerk, to send a, a letter of thanks to Deputy Chief Dattoli and fire chief? Could that be done, Mr. President?
Hm.
Because he did spend a lot of time down there. And I will inform you, Mr. President, as to when we can do a tour, when the weather breaks. But at least the alarm is off, so we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
I'll send that letter.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to refer back to sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll send the letter.
Eyes have it. Clerk will continue the order of business.
Item number 12. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by counselors Rosa DeFlorio, Michael Marchese, John Leo McKinnon, Wayne Matuski, and Stephen Simonelli, that anyone signing up for the public participation to speak be made aware that no public attacks on city council members are allowed.
Fable action.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
On the motion, Mr. President, I know that-
Do you want to bring it all back for reconsideration?
Yeah. Well, I'd like to speak on it briefly, anyway.
Okay, I, I apologize. I didn't see the option.
12.
12. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, at the beginning of the meeting, and I know that your tensions are good, but it's got to be made clear that anybody coming up to this table and, and makes accusations, or whatever it may be, to any employee of the city, it's just not that kind of forum. You laid out the groundwork. It's got to be good-hearted, interested discussion. And we give them, allot them 10 minutes to do that. But as past experience will tell you, Mr. President, and the rules have not changed, because I looked them up, every president's different. I know that you'll do the right thing, because we've discussed this matter. But just a few years ago, we had individuals coming up here attacking people, namely me. And it went off for six meetings. And the president, before each time that individual spoke, said to him, you can't do personal attacks. It's, I, I've reviewed the tapes, just so you all know. Needless to say, Mr. President, after he said that and set the ground rules, this man just went on a tangent six different times. Now, I, I want it enforced, because if it isn't enforced, I'm going to say something when, you know, you're not supposed to say anything during this participation period. But if it does happen, you know, I think we have a right to stand up and say something.
From the chair, if I could, would you allow me?
Absolutely.
Okay. Public participation started off as a privilege, and we're all aware of that. And now, it's, now it's part of our, it's part of the charter, it's part of the rules. The intent of it is for mem, is for residents to come up and make us aware of issues, put it on our radar so we can address it. I've made it absolutely clear, and will continue to reiterate at the beginning of every single meeting until I feel it's no longer necessary, what the guidelines are. It needs to be understood that because our rules prohibit us to speak, we're not a captured audience, where we can become, where we can be belittled and attacked and not be expected to respond. It's a courtesy. It's a means for us to be able to get out and, get out there and do better work in the community, to be able to address these issues. And I will not allow it to break down into a political forum. So, I definitely understand everybody's feelings here.
All right.
But you have to trust that I will not allow that to happen. And if an individual persists to do that, then we will go through the proper course of action to have that person removed from the chambers. Because again, this is our chambers, which we operate in on behalf of the residents, taxpayers, and citizens of Everett, all of our residents. And we've had a very positive experience, full of experience with, with the public participation. But I understand your concerns. I share them. We're not going to allow it, okay? Naming individual members by name is not to be tolerated, because we're not allowed to respond. It's the wrong, the wrong venue. We're made aware of an issue. We're aware of it. Now, move it on and work it, work it somewhere else if it has to do with, with a member of us. And again, if we investigate that it's something that is warranted, that's within our, that's in violation of our rules, we will take those actions.
Mr. President, you say that we're going to have a sign-in sheet, like we already have.
Sign-in sheet will have a contact spot.
And we're going to require them to put their home address and phone number, or internet mailing.
We just need a means to be able to contact them.
All right.
And my, my intent is that when a, when a person comes up and speaks, and they want to be contacted, I believe the ward counselor and one of the councils at large should be, should be assigned to follow up on it. It's just good business.
Well, as I said, no offense to any buddy in particular, but, you know, this is our chamber. We have an election every two years. You know, we won. We're all, you know, here to do the right thing. And I just don't like attacks on my fellow members here at any given time, including myself.
Well said, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Fable action.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Item number 13. Item number 13, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael K. Marchese that the city can consider placing signs on Beecham Street eliminating the left-hand turn, Monday to Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., and also put added sign on Route 16, sending cars and trucks to Second Street.
I'm not sure if this is the proper place to discuss this. I'll have to send this to traffic.
I believe this would be sent to traffic.
This would be a traffic.
Okay, okay. I mean, I'd like to send this traffic, get a response back in two weeks if I could.
That, I'm, I'm going to be honest, probably wouldn't happen. I think their meeting is in about two weeks. Just, just so you know, I would, I would give them four weeks.
This will mark it on until their next.
It's up to you, but I don't think you'll have enough time.
All right. I'd like to get notified of it so I can attend.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Counsel Hanlon.
I'm kind of confused with this one here. We're on Beecham Street. Are we talking about no left-hand turns?
Oh, yeah, actually, it'd be left on Broadway. It's for the old Mike Stone. It's, actually, John, that's what we're in the process of doing.
No, it's not in here, that's why.
That's what we're in the process of doing when you were mayor. And I don't know if it can be done just because of the truck route. If the truck route, designated truck route, where it has to be used- truck route, where it has to be used, or if we keep some of the traffic over there.
Yeah, I understand.
It brings it down to one lane in the morning.
If I could make a suggestion, only because the administration is working with the state on those truck routes, if you could attend that, that, that traffic meeting--
Sure.
--when they address that, there, you'll know all the details.
Beautiful.
And again, if they're not, if they're not fully empowered to deal with this, because it's 99, at least it'll put you in the right direction. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Refer this to Traffic Commission, is that what it would be?
Yeah, yeah, it would be Lieutenant Hanon and the commission.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, and send a letter to Councilman Marchese to be able to attend that meeting.
Yeah.
I did write that in the notes.
Thank you.
Give a motion to refer this to Traffic, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 14, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor John Leo McKinnon that we honor the wishes of the family of Mr. Ali, the owner of Angelina Subs, to have a dedicated square at the corner of Broadway and Parker Street in honor of his family, of him and his family's service to the city and citizens of Everett. For decades, according to his religion, I believe this needs to be done 40 days after his passing, and that the date should be on or around the 14th of February, and that a signed designation would also be considered for display.
Councilor McKinnon?
On the piece, I would also like to open this up to any other councilors that would like to be on it, and I could amend it as, as so. I could do the whole entire, if everybody was shoes to be on it.
I'd like to amend it right now to add the whole entire council.
I have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
A motion to add the entire city council to that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Broadway and Parker may be dedicated already.
I was just going to actually say this, I drove by there this weekend. If I could-- I'm going to add, I'm actually, I still have the floor, Mr. President, I was going to add that. It's the Snook family that actually has a dedicated square there already in front of Angelina's. This would go on the opposite side of Park and Broadway. So I went by, I took a look at it myself, and there is a dedicated square there now with the Snook family. Sergeant Snook, to be precise. No. It's a memorial. You can do it for Alvega, and you can do it for-- prominent. Forever. You're a war for. That's why. These are all signed, these are all done by veterans. I'm actually, I was going to send it to the mayor's office and see if we can get this done, and if there's any issue with it, if there is--
We're actually been discussing the legalities, not, 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 know whether it's, I've actually noticed Ali all my life, went to high school with his daughter Adele, my father's barber shop was on the same block before he, before he moved to where he is right now. He was originally on the other side of Broadway, so I've got about over 55 years of memories of Mr. Ali.
Absolutely.
A great guy, great family.
Played football with his kids.
But we also don't want to, but we don't want to inadvertently push anyone off.
Oh, no.
The question that was coming up is whether a square constitutes the corner or the intersection.
Right.
And if it's the intersection, it's already a dedicated square. It needs to be researched a little bit.
Do we need a legal opinion on it, or?
Well, I think if you're going to send it to the mayor's office, I would--
And they'll discuss it with me.
--advise it following up, because they'll discuss that.
This is time-sensitive, reason being is because of the religion aspect of it.
First thing in the morning, I'll send it to the mayor's office and probably sit down with Attorney Mahir and Chief of Staff O'Donnell. I'll make sure I do it personally.
You're our guy, that's why.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of information, that Sergeant Walter Q. Snook, he was a member
of the Angelina Crew. That was his corner. So the Snook family would have absolutely no problem at all with Ali S. Ali, viva la Walter Q. Snook.
Right. And this, but this will have to go through the mayor's office, because square dedications are, at this time of the, it's all preview of the Veterans Affairs. And again, as much as I have known and loved Mr. Ali, he's not a veteran. So we need to, we need to look at this through--
Mr. President?
Can you give us some information? That'd be great.
Yeah, the, there was one other, I think it was Alvega Square.
No, he's, he was actually--
He was a veteran.
Was he a veteran as well?
I raised the same question.
I remember that, we discussed the same thing.
Well, if we could, if we could actually look into it, legal opinion, and then get back, that would be great. But I'd like it at the next meeting prior to, I believe, the February 14 date, if we could do that.
What's the motion, send it?
Send it to the mayor's office. Send it to the request, and I would just follow up. And then follow back with me, through the clerk or through you, Mr. President, either way.
Yep.
On the motion, Mr. President.
Councilor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. I spoke to Mrs. Ali a few days after her husband passed away, and they're wonderful people, they live on Rock Valley Ave. It was a shock to me to read, well, it was in The Independent, I believe, they did a story on it. This man almost invented the submarine sandwich, really. They had articles, I guess when he first opened, they were 25 cents a sub. As a matter of fact, I was privileged to give him a citation here in this chambers on his 50th anniversary, right here at the podium. He was a wonderful man, you know, and he worked hard, he always had a smile, as you said, Mr. President, and the family is creme de la creme. And if his son-in-law hadn't passed away, who was actually running the restaurant at a very young age, just a few years ago, they would have continued on with that restaurant. But when he passed away, they wanted to rent it out to another business. But Mrs. Ali would like to express her thanks to the city council, and in particular, Councilor McKinnon, for actually bringing this forward. As I said, they're mourning right now, and I've been close to them for many years. They are quality people, and he would be sadly missed, and I think he deserves something. Actually, you know, you don't see submarine, Santoro's and Marlin is the only other place that I could consider. You know, and they've been there since the Last Supper. But anyway, I'm in favor of this, and I hope the mayor decides to do something with this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to send this to the mayor's office?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
With a response back by our next meeting?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 15?
Item number 15, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor John Leo McKinnon that the newly hired clinician and program coordinator for the opioid task force that the, that the city council administration had funded to help with the opioid problem, come before the city council to update the city council on their progress and new initiatives throughout the city at our first meeting in February.
Councilor DePero?
I'll yield to the sponsor first.
Councilor McKinnon, sorry about that.
I just wanted to actually-- Councilor McKinnon, they won't be able to hear you on.
Yeah, I wanted to actually, yeah, thank you for that, Mr. Clerk. I wanted to add Councilman DePero on this piece as well, and I wanted to invite Steve Sapino as well, and I believe there's another gentleman.
Dennis Doris.
Mr. Dennis Doris, that's going to be active within this task force as well, so if we can invite them all to come up and actually give us a oversight and a brief on that.
Do I have a second?
Check it.
Okay. Councilor DePero?
And amend it.
Could I get that name again? Sorry. Dennis, what was it? Dennis Doris?
Yeah, we amended to add Councilor DePero on that.
Second motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And to invite Steve Sapino and Dennis Doris.
I wrote both of them, I just didn't remember the other name. Thank you.
Do we vote on that?
I don't know if you went all in favor.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Ayes have it. Item number 16?
Item number 16. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by councilors John Leo McKinnon and Fred Capone that the mayor personally appears at our next meeting to address the ongoing flood problems at the Calvert on Spring Street, especially in light of the discussion that Everett Veterans' Memorial Stadium is to be replaced by a state-of-the-art stadium at Seven Acre Park.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yeah, this is just to have insight on what's going to be happening at the stadium down there. If there's been rumors that it may be sold, or there's rumors that someone is purchasing it, or it's going to be moved, we'd like to find out what's going on with it. If we could have the mayor come and appear before us so that we can have insight from his office to our legislative body, that would be great, as well as any, any, there's been a flooding issue down in that area, and there's been also things that we need to be looking at. We may want to actually have the engineer department come as well, reason being is because the flooding situation that is going on down there could pose a problem with this. So we'd like to discuss that as well at that next meeting, so if we can do that, that'll be great.
Councilor Capone?
I'll second that motion, and just to reiterate on it, we've had, this isn't new news to anybody. I mean, we've been here for a long time, and there's been countless study after study after study. A lot of money's been thrown at this project, and nothing has happened, and nothing has changed. And we've heard it's this, it's that, the gates are malfunctioning. This needs to be addressed, and nothing happens. You're very well aware of the flooding on Cottage Street. We're told that the gates down, down the market area are the reason why you have flooding on Cottage. I don't think that that's the case, I think we have undersized pipes in Cottage, but I'm not an engineer. We need to get this resolved, we need to resolve the Calvert area, especially in light of there's going to be new construction going down there. We already have enough going down there, we need to get this problem resolved. And then, once this problem is resolved, we can figure out whether or not this is actually the cause of Cottage Street, and maybe work our way up and give those poor people some relief. So I second the motion to have the mayor and someone from the engineers department at our next meeting.
If I could, from the chair, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, it's long overdue. We've been, the first time I heard about this issue was dealing with it in 2000. This has been 17, 18 years, and the problem goes further back than that. The biggest issue has to do with liability, who is actually responsible for it, and that's why this keeps getting bounced back and forth, it's very expensive repair. But again, it's not getting any better, and I'm not sure that we, we just keep ignoring the problem. Councilor McKinnon?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you, to my colleague. I've spoken to engineering, and there was something mentioned of a pump station, there's something mentioned of the pipe, the whole construction of the pipe being from Everett to Chelsea and out into the Chelsea Creek, being refurbished and being redone. There's possibilities of Chelsea being involved, so we're going to need to hear what, you know, what the scenario is going to be. The price tag that I heard was kind of high, and I just want to hear it from them, what it's going to take to actually fix this. But I know that we've been piecemealing it, and they've been fixing the pipe as it breaks. We're not going to be able to do that any longer, and, you know, the situation's just getting worse, and if we, we add more, you know, if we add more stuff to this, this area, you know, it's just, it's going to break down. So we need to do some fixing before we start adding, I think, so that's just one man's opinion, but I want to hear from our mayor, as well as the engineering department on this. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to send this to the mayor's office? Second. Ask for it at our next meeting, and the, and the city engineer.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 17?
Item number 17, Mr. President, is an ordinance offered by Councilor Michael K. Marchese to amend the awning ordinance color to include a black awning.
As, as everything, you know, okay, this would be sent to--
I want to just elaborate if, when you're done.
Elaborate on it?
Yep.
Okay, do you want to elaborate on it now?
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Or can I just, first, I'd like to also add, Councilor Matusky is a co-sponsor to it, because he's interested. Even prior to my hiatus, we never approved of, what we're supposed to approve in this year, that's why we have yellow, green, pink, orange, no one sticks to it. It's very simple, every city can do it except for Everett, I don't understand why. So at least have an option of black, and you can decorate the black, you can decorate the red. I mean, every corner has purple, has yellow, has green, and they have new signs, they're not old signs. No one's enforcing that ordinance. I mean, I know that people are friends and friends, but you've got to do something to make the city look uniform, and that's all I'm going to say. I just hope, wish we started enforcing some ordinances, that's all.
If I could, from the chair, the, what we've kind of established is that unfortunately it's not an ordinance, it's one of our rules. We really need, we need to create an ordinance to have something enforceable. I'm not disputing--
Yep, and then if we have to, why don't we create--
That's the reason we're--
--a ordinance.
Our clerk actually has a lot of information about this.
Okay, so--
If you want to hear from me, you don't have to.
If the clerk could. Excuse me, what would be, what, where do you want this to be sent?
I just want to explain what's going on in the administration with, with me right now, and then you can do as you wish. Currently, myself, the city solicitor, building, engineering, planning department, have started a, or in the process of starting an ad hoc committee through the mayor, which is a sign review board committee, which I, when they discussed it, I volunteered myself on behalf of the council, because this seems to be an issue, and I deal with it often with the awnings. We've already had three meetings, I have another one on Wednesday. We're working on, what is the vision of the city? Do you want just red and black? Do we want sections of the city? Now Glendale and Everett Square are more historical areas, do you want to go with the nice golden lay type looks? Do you, what is our vision for our community going forward in the coming years?
To make it look like a community.
Well, so that's what we're working on, so this ad hoc--
I'd like to have some good--
Right, so in the, in the process, we are trying to review and see what we would like to do as a city, going, moving forward. So I'm in the process of working with the engineering department, building department, and especially planning on what we should do and how we should go forward. Here, Councilor, President Paul Tanos is correct, currently what we have was a rule. A rule has no teeth of law, it only dictates what we can do, and there's no ordinance. You could put this forward if you would like to do an ordinance, but what I'm pretty much maybe stating is, if you want, to give us a little bit of time to see where we are over the next coming month or so, so I could maybe present something better to you, and then you could decide if you want to move forward this, or I believe this committee is what their, their proposal is, to build a larger, nicer vision for the city with lighting in storefronts, not utilizing so much of the window space as you see. We want a whole vision, something that we, it's long overdue.
This could be, could this be referred to legislative affair?
You could do that, you could refer it to me, and I could come back to you in, in a month, or 30 to 60 days, if you'd like that. I mean, I've been writing most of the ordinances anyway.
I'd refer it to the city clerk, that'd be our motion.
And just, if you could give me either 30 to 60 days, whatever it be--
Libertades.
60 would be preferable, but 30 is fine.
Beautiful. Sixty days?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Councilor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, years ago, they had the, a different type of awning, okay? They made a cloth, the guy went out and put the little hook on it, rolled it. I used to do my uncle's barber shop. I used to do my uncle's barber shop. It was beautiful. It had scallop in the front. Now they went to these plastic type things, and I have to say, there's got to be at least a dozen of them that are ripped, and they look worn out and cheap, you know, with no offense to any particular business. We approved an awning license for down on Broadway. The guy, the gentleman that was putting, installing this awning, this covering, had a business in Everett. He looked down, and he said, oh, I'm going to put a brand-new one up. You know what he did? He went down there and painted it. Okay? And it looks creepy.
Chestnut and Broadway.
Used to be nuzzo plumbing or electrical.
Further down, yeah.
But, you know, we have, you know, I don't mind what color it is, more or less. Can you imagine asking the Wind Casino people, hey, guess what? You can only have crimson red in the Frank Sinatra Restaurant. Hello? There's a whole new thing going on here, okay? Class is where you want to be. I don't like these cheap-looking pla, if I could say, no more plastic, whatever they are made out of, they look hideous. And they're all over the city, some of them not too bad, I have to say, but for some reason, they get worn out, and maybe the clerk could bring this up at his awning committee meeting, beautification, same thing. But, you know, there's quite a few women in Everett that look, I don't want to vote for one. As a matter of fact, I've asked somebody, I think it was the previous city clerk, to maybe go down and look at, but he was on the end of his term here, his clerk, and maybe he didn't have the time, excuse me. But that awning was painted, and we voted for a new awning. The framework is there, and they just covered it up, Mr. President. Oh, I'm going to put a nice color, black and white. We even changed the color for the guy. But you have to, you know, check it after we vote on these things. And I go by there, and there's a few others on Ferry Street that don't look too good. But, you know, that's the building department's angle, and maybe this commission that you're putting together can address some of these unsightly frontages of businesses, because they look cheap. They really do. And I agree with Councilor Marchese. I mean, you know, the color doesn't bother me, it's the maintenance of them. Years ago, they were beautiful years ago. I see pictures of Everett Square in the, you know, going back, and all these stores had these beautiful awnings that rolled out, and at nighttime, the guy would roll them in, and they, you know, it was nice. But these stationary ones, they look kind of creepy to me, but anyway, I'm glad that at least we're talking about it, because we are a first-class city, and a lot's happening here, so we've got to keep an eye on awnings, too. Thank you.
Councilman Semenelli.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you, Councilman Semenelli. Not to dispute the gold, I love gold, too, but I was just on my own mind, Councilman Semenelli's own mind, that perhaps just the crimson and the tide, just to get started with, and I don't know if you've been talking about that in your meeting there. But black or red, rather have the gold.
Councilman Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President, not to belabor the point, but to echo the words of Councilman Touski, when that particular business came up here, there was a debate in this floor, and he went out of his way to say, okay, let's give this guy a shot, he's going to do it the right way, and the guy goes and paints the sign. So it's unbelievable. So the only thing I would say is, through you to our clerk, when they're doing their review, I would have, if it's possible, please bring up a provision that says, one of the requirements of the sign is, you need to maintain the sign, and if the sign is not maintained, it must be removed completely. And that way, you've got no business sign.
And we can do that with an ordinance. The reason I think Clerk Maranzo was unable to do anything is, it was a rule, and though you passed the awning with the contingency, we didn't have the teeth of law to do anything.
Exactly. It's a whim, and it's not a law. But I think that we need to, we have, we have a lot of wonderful business members in our community. Unfortunately, there are a few here and there that don't maintain it, and it makes the rest of the city look bad, as has been mentioned up here. So maybe we need to look into an ordinance that will say that if they don't maintain it, it will have to be removed completely.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to send this to the city clerk?
The motion to send the city clerk, that's all. Come back, get back to us within 60 days, then see if we can work something, get two ways and means, and make an ordinance out of it.
And it was as amended with Councilman Touski, correct?
Yes, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item will take number, clerk will take item 18?
Item number 18. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Fred Capone, that the city engineer appear at the next city council meeting to discuss the progress being made to restrict heavy trucking on Second Street between Broadway and Route 16.
Councilman Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been an ongoing issue in, it got as far as traffic commission's already approved of the process. Mr. O'Rourke, before he left, was going to request $10,000 for a study. For the members who aren't aware of what the problem is, there's a crossing light on the corner of Second Street and Broadway, right down the street from the school, and almost on a daily basis, trucks come up on the curb and knock this light down. We've requested a bollard there, and the bollard has been knocked around quite a bit. It's at about a 60-degree angle right now, so I think we have to address that, because I think the structural integrity of that is gone. And just recently, another truck took out the light. So this has got to be fifth, sixth light that we've had to replace as a city within a year and a half. So it's lights, and it's costing us money, it's costing us time, but where we have children that are walking down at school, one of these days is going to be a kid under the wheels of that truck. So I want to know where we're at with that study, requesting the appropriation, so that we can move to the next stage and see if we can restrict the trucks for that section of Second Street. So I want to refer this to the engineer's office, ask them to appear at the next meeting with an update.
Second motion.
Okay, a motion for sending this to the city engineers' office? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 19.
Final item. Item number 19. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Fred Capone, that the mayor personally appear at the next city council meeting to discuss real estate taxes, new growth, and implementation of a reduced tax rate, given all the development occurring within the city.
Councilman Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's no surprise and no news to any of us that we have a lot of growth going on in the city. We have a lot of development, we've got a casino, we have our first hotel, we have all kinds of growth going in this community, which means a lot more tax base coming in. Now, at the same time, property values are going up. So what's happening is, property values are going up, all the growth is going up, a tax rate stays the same, so everybody's paying more. And I think that if you have all of this growth, and you have a casino, this is an opportunity to improve the quality of life for the people who are living here and are maintaining their businesses here, that with the increased rate, with the increased growth and increased value, if you keep the rate the same, all you're doing is increasing the surplus to the city. And the city shouldn't be a for-profit corporation, all right? And it shouldn't be born on the backs of the people who are, you know, trying to make a home here. We've talked about affordable housing. Affordable housing is a thing of the past in the city right now. And the reality is, folks out there say, well, what's the difference? You know, it's just for the people that own property. The reality is, the people that own the property have to set their rents based off of what their expenses are. And if the taxes just keep going up, rent's going to keep going up. Talked to a gentleman this evening who had a problem. He can't afford to pay his tax bill. You've got seniors on fixed incomes. If the property values go up and that tax rate doesn't get adjusted, all that's happening is your fixed cost goes up. If your income is at a level that's here, you're going to have to sell. And we talk about how wonderful it is that your property value's gone up, and it is wonderful. It's much better it goes up than it goes down. But the reality is, unless you're going to sell your house, or unless you're going to bleed the equity out of it, it means nothing to you. It doesn't help you. What helps you is if your value is going up, bring the tax rate down. And that way, you can afford to live in the community, maybe your kids can afford to live in a community, and we can go forward. We're on, we're on the verge of so much growth and everything going on, some luxury apartments, casino, et cetera. This is the time when you have the financial ability to try to make it affordable to stay in Everett. So I would like to have the mayor personally, Mr. Demus, and a representative from the Board of Assessors to come to our next meeting so we can discuss that. Because we should be on a path of reducing our tax rate with this growth. Now, maybe down the road, there comes a time when we don't have that growth, and you have to talk about adjusting the tax rate. But if you have unsurpassed and unprecedented growth, and you don't reduce that tax rate, you are beating the hell out of the taxpayer. And we know what? We have an obligation to do something about that, everybody in this room does, and I know that we all feel that way. So that's my recommendation, that we ask the mayor, Mr. Demus, and someone from the Board of Assessors to come to our next meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Send the time to the mayor's office, including asking the mayor to appear with Mr. Demus and who else?
Assessor and a board member from the assessors, I believe.
Okay. Councilman DePero?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's up to the will of the body, but I wouldn't mind perhaps sending this to a committee of the whole and requesting that the administration put together some sort of presentation instead of just a discussion of where we are, where we're going, what step we're at, especially in light of, as we all know, someone's printing a lot of their opinions about the city's finances and so forth, and there's a lot of confusion out there. So I'd like to see a presentation from the administration, if that's okay.
Councilman Capone?
No, I'd be happy with that. I'll rescind my motion, because I think that it's such an important topic, and this is the opportunity to talk about it. And whether there's an actual presentation, that doesn't matter to me. I think there needs to be a discussion on where we're going as a community. And we do have the opportunity with all this growth to actually bring the tax rate down. We're not going to suffer as a community, because with that increased growth, the increased value of the properties, a reduced tax rate's still going to get you above where you are now. But when you allow increased growth and new construction to be at a pace where it is, and you don't do anything to adjust that tax rate, it's irresponsible, and it's a burden to the taxpayer.
Councilman Marchese?
Just a quick issue, is I want to say, the problem with the city of Everett is the spending problem. That's the problem. Everything, you can say your tax rate is low, low, you still spend too much money. The tax rate is, the amount of money that's being spent is ridiculous in this city, it's not offered. And second of all, we're talking about building affordable housing. We have affordable housing here. I mean, I, that's, I don't have affordable housing, but, I mean, I was under $1,000 on a two-bedroom two years ago. My water bills and my taxes, I mean, I got to make something out of the house, you know? But I mean, the water bill, when, you know, when I had this place 12 years ago, I went, it was like $5,000 in taxes, maybe $1,000 in water. Now, it's over, it's $11,000 in water and $20,000 in taxes. And I keep eating it, so finally, I just had it go up, but it's still quite the cheapest two-bedrooms in the city. But, you know, we have affordable housing, we need help to keep it affordable.
Councilman DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a note that on the owner occupied, before it was capped at $65,000, this year went up to $104,000, so there was some relief on the owner occupied. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to invite the mayor, send it to a committee of the whole.
And I have all the invitees.
Very good.
Okay. Council?
I agree with that meeting of the whole, but don't want to see it come on Monday night. Do it on a Thursday night. Monday night, we do it at 6 o'clock. We're still working on it at 8:30. We haven't even started our council meeting.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it?
Second motion.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.